Good evening, I will call the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council Public Meeting to Order. It's a special Common Council meeting this evening, so thank you all the persons. Alder Person Cope is the only other person that couldn't join us here this evening, but we've got a quorum, so we'll go ahead and get started. Just for the record, we'll go around and do introductions. Zach Frohlink, Mayor.
Jay Catnall, Alder Person.
Joe Zarflu, Alder Person.
Tom Graham, Alder Person.
Jennifer Gossick, City Clerk.
Dan Kubisak, Alder Person.
Lee Graff, Alder Person.
Shane Blazer, Alder Person.
Scott Kowal, Alder Person.
Melissa Segway, Tribune.
Joan Crade, Lowell Center.
Jennifer Cummings, Aging and Disability Resource Center.
Joe Terry, Director of Public Works.
Rosemary Felice, Home Delivered Meal Driver and former Director of Lowell and the Adult Daycare Board Member and also Aging Resource Director.
Mary Jo Carson, former Mayor and fundraiser for Centrelia, and that was a good project. And it is a good project.
Kristy Aggie, Wood County Health Department during the day, and I hear from Encourage.
Adam Tager, Development Director.
I'm Barbara Hicken, I'm a concerned citizen and a frequent user of the ADRC meal site.
Matthew Serrul, Senior Citizen, likewise a user of the Centrelia Center.
Jay Marka, HMO Center, Cancer Center.
Gwen Gigi, Concerned Citizen and User of the Volks.
Tim Grizz, Citizen and Volunteer at the Center.
Excellent, well, thank you all for being here, we'll go ahead and get started. Item one, or item two on our Agenda's review, the proposed plans and specifications for the Third Avenue South between Johnson Street and Goggins Street Straightening Project, and consider letting the project for bid. It's also noticed that the council may travel to Third Avenue site, to the Third Avenue site, and if so, will return to the First floor conference room to take any action. We may not need to travel tonight unless anybody has a particular desire to, I think we just noticed it as such in case there was an interest. So, by way of an update on this project, as many of you are aware, this project was originally brought to the Finance and Property Committee at the rectory last council meeting, and because of a variety of reasons, I interpreted the conversation anyway, to postpone until a future meeting, which we've coordinated tonight. Since that time, a couple of developments have occurred on the project that I'll share with all of you, that I also indicated in an email earlier today. The first of which has been some additional design input as it relates to the street portion of the project. Joe Terry and I spend a bit of time, I think just about everybody in the room here, at either coffee sessions or at the center, during the Meals on Wheels hours, outside of that, so appreciate everyone that's engaged, at least that has shown up here tonight, and everyone else that couldn't be here, to weigh in on various impacts as it relates to the street realignment and straightening projects. So, Joe, if you want to maybe talk a little bit about some of the feedback that will be reflected, or at least have been provided input for us to consider as we go forward on the design portion of the project.
Sure, so, most of the input that we received is on the Centrelia Center side of Third Avenue, and primarily concerned about access to the building for handicap access, for the adult daycare area, concerns about, as it was drawn on the plan, making that area smaller, restricting it a bit in order to accommodate the street, and parking, and delivery access for Meals on Wheels program, and access for the folks that want to use that entrance for the lunch activities. You know, we were able to take a look at the plans, kind of evaluate some potential solutions, and came up with a few things that seem to have resonated well, and one of those things is that for the area by the Adult Daycare Center, that fenced-in area, the proposed parking lot redesign at the Centrelia Center would allow for that area to be extended further to the south, and try to do what we can to at least maintain the same area footprint that we have now, if not extend it. One of the other concerns was with delivery for Meals on Wheels, and when I met with most of the folks, when the mayor and I met with a lot of the folks, the concern was that even if we designated the on-street parking in that entire block for the hours of Meals on Wheels, that there was some concern about access, and if it was busy, parallel parking, those types of things. And so, we took a look at, and believe that we have a solution where the loading dock area could be retained as a loading dock, but not necessarily to accommodate a semi-truck and trailer combination. That that area might be modified, those walls removed, right now, their sidewalk along the east side of the Centrelia Center that's covered all the way to that wall, if that wall were removed and that area were graded and turned into a small parking lot, that you'd have literally covered access to a parking area that could work well as a Meals on Wheels delivery drop area. In addition to maintaining some handicap parking and that entire block for, you know, exclusive parking, restricted parking during Meals on Wheels pickup and delivery. So, that's kind of a summary of some of the things. The other thing was a concern about green space and maintaining as much green space as possible. I think when the mayor presents a few of the options, while the street would be relocated, there is certainly a desire to keep as much green space and make this a very, very pleasant area for everybody, for visitors, for the farmer's market, as well as, you know, for folks using the Centrelia Center.
And then, just a couple other comments on the green space, at least as it relates to the Centrelia side in terms of feedback. We did discuss it at the Finance and Property Committee meeting, but I know not all the council members were there the first time, that the space between the realigned street and the building, there's a new garden that was installed through donations and community contributions, as well as the city committed, I believe, $10,000 in the last budget cycle. And those improvements have been done, and they're wonderful, they're really great. And so, I know that we had some conversation about how close the street would get to provide ample separation, so for one reason or another, the street actually has a slight, will retain a slight jog, it doesn't exactly line up parallel from the south of the building coming to the north, which will also result in some additional space between the back of the sidewalk and the building. So, there are two entrances on the east side of the Centrelia Center that go into the Lowell Center spaces, and both of those will be accessible from the sidewalk, whereas today they're really not, from the street's level side of things. So, that's a little bit of an update on the Centrelia Center impacts and some of the conversations we've had with folks to date about that. I'll now move into some of the updates as it relates to financing, and earlier today I shared-
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Is there a drawing of this?
So, we have some very, and all the options were not supposed to be shared because they're not formal options, but this is my hack job of copy and paste from Microsoft Paint about two weeks ago, to try to show like the street, and Joe may have a better, he's got the full plans set, do you happen to have that with you, Joe?
I do, we can pass it around.
Yeah, we can pass that around.
Do you have the work out for you to do?
Yeah. The only thing that's-
Oh, yeah, that'll be a trap.
The only thing that's, um, the only thing that's formal on these drawings, I want to caution you, the only thing that's barely set in stone is the street realignment portion, which is the white copy and paste in there, showing the street footprint of the new street. The other options were not intended to be shared with council because they're not formal options at this point, we can get into all of that in a second, but as it relates to financing and commitments this morning, we met with the three funders that have been in discussion with the city on the project, which are the Mead Witter Foundation, the Legacy Foundation, and Encourage, to talk about, one, their financial commitments, and, two, any contingencies they would have with their commitments to the project, financial commitments to the project. And I think all of the commitments were emailed to you all, but essentially, the Mead Witter Foundation and Legacy Foundation commitments come with a contingency that they would be, the property behind the Tribune Building, which was the previous city parking lot that was provided to Encourage through a development agreement, the expectation is that property will revert back to the city, and that's been discussed, I think, at a number of meetings that we've had on the potential project, and that has not occurred. And so, we remain in discussion with Encourage to have that done, we were hopeful that as some time would pass between our meeting two weeks ago and today, that we would have some additional formal progress to report. But I will say that Encourage is receptive to doing it, doing so, we had provided them a notice of default, and they have up to a year to cure that default by the developers' agreement, which means they have up to a year to initiate activities that would satisfy the city's agreement. But at this point, we've asked Encourage to consider reverting it sooner, and so we continue to discuss that potential with them. As of today, as I mentioned, it has not occurred, but the financial commitments still remain in place, the 750,000 that is collectively between Mead Witter Foundation and Legacy Foundation, as well as the 270,000 that was pledged by Encourage during early meetings when the city and the state had been meeting about the status of the state grant to the project, so, and that was 270,000. The state grant is just shy of 500,000, and would draw down, a portion of that would be eligible for Encourage to draw on for demolition of the interior of that building. So, we're still looking at a project budget of around a million and a half dollars, of which the private funding, total about a million, and then the state funding would be just shy of half a million dollars. This morning, when we met with the foundations, we discovered there is some discrepancies, maybe in the understanding on the math and the drawdown, by Encourage on a portion of the grant, that was a previous understanding that the city had, so we're still, we still need to validate that information back with Encourage, and for our benefit to know if we're still talking a total budget of just shy of a million and a half dollars. So, Adam can walk us through the math if anyone wishes, but that still remains somewhat of a moving target, I would say. And then, the last portion, as it relates to the street design, pending any additional modifications that Jewel, the designer that the city engaged with to do the street design, that remains ready for bid letting, and that was, of course, the item we had on our last agenda, it's on our agenda tonight. You know, the good news is we have the funding commitments, but there still remains this unresolved item related to the reversion of the property, as well as a potential component with the project budget, that seems to remain unresolved. The foundations also, the other two foundations, expect that the property revert back to the city unencumbered, meaning without any formal restrictions, deed restrictions, easements, that sort of thing. So, as it relates to the three designs that were included in your packet, we had asked Encourage in one of the early meetings to consider the impacts that some of the designs they had done and commissioned for their project, how they would, what was included on the former city property, and that's what you'll see in those iterations. These aren't alternatives, these are not options that we're considering, at least at the city level, we still need to move into design for the property, but that was their representation of what was slated to be on city property, or formerly city property, I should say. So, of course, their design and features of the sustainability features in the building are impacted, and then finally, the concept for that space, since I mentioned it's not been designed, still remains primarily parking lot, farmer's market, and green space, with the fourth being the street realignment that would occur to necessitate or provide for that space. So, Adam, do you have any further comment as it relates to the concept, or any of the details?
No, I mean, you hit on the four main parts of this project, as I mentioned, consistent throughout the discussion. Obviously, I think their diagrams that are, were provided are really more to show potential massing more than anything, showing that on this lot, there is the room for a farmer's market space, there is room on it for parking, and there is room on it for community space. It is a viable site for all those elements, and that's what those were intended to do. Again, they're not, it's not at the time that we're saying let's run with any one of them. And then, ultimately, there is the, I guess, until we really know what the cost of the street is going to be, and we don't know that until that's let, that kind of lends the discussion on what elements will be developed as a part of this funding cycle, meaning with this 1.5 million dollar budget. If the street comes in higher than expected, then it may mean that only some of the features are developed at this point versus all of them. If it comes in lower, then we can maybe tackle all at once. So, there is still a little bit of unknown on what would actually be built prior to the end of this calendar year.
So, I'll go on, do you have a table first, just for questions, to make sure we get clarity, because I know these options are really, can really paint a picture for what could be there, as Adam said, around massing, but it is not a design that we've commissioned, nor have we gotten farmer's market blessing, vendor blessing, you know, all those components, or foundation blessing. Foundations all, while they're very excited and want to pursue the project, they all want to be a part of, an element of the design discussion as well, to make sure that their expectations are reflected and satisfied by the design, which has not occurred because we're not, we haven't have a project yet. So, one quick second, I'm just going to make sure nobody has a question around the table, and then Rosemary will go off-table.
I do have a question. What are the aspects of the grant that we received from the state? It was my understanding that the grant was a three-to-one matching grant, right?
Right.
So, the project was actually slated for 1.8 million dollars-
Correct.
-in order to get the 451,000.
Right.
If we reduce the total scope of the project, we reduce the amount of grant we'll get from the state?
Correct.
But what is the drawdown that the Encourage Foundation has against the grant? As it sits with the 1.8?
The 1.5 to the 1.8, there's about $380,000 demolition costs that the state is considering eligible, right, Adam, is that correct?
Correct.
Just looking to make sure I've got the math in my head right. And so, their, the suggestion was this morning that they would actually draw their portion on those expenses, and that was not our understanding. That actually takes 100,000 out of the state grant portion, so that's the discrepancy we want to reconcile, from what we originally started discussing, and then up until frankly today, I mean, it was, we felt it was affirmed, and I think it was even affirmed at our first discussion, when we had talked about the Encourage involvement, and I think Adam's memo actually outlined those commitments, and we have to just double-check all that since that was just this morning, to make sure that we were in fact understood, and, you know, on both parties' respect.
So, any drawdown on what the state grant would be would come to a cost, so if the Encourage Foundation with the grant applications that they currently have, and the way it was submitted 40 years ago, we would actually have to, as a city council, approve the 100,000 dollars less of the grant in order to get the project done?
If we wanted to spend the original project cost.
But we wouldn't be able to utilize the state grant.
A portion. If in fact Encourage wants to submit 100,000 dollars in drawdown, yeah, the project would now receive 100,000 dollars less of the state's-
Which the city would, we would have to pick up.
If we, no, it would actually come off the grant, so they're using Encourage's 300,000, the three-to-one match, that actually comes out of the total project cost, so it's not...
But our grant from the state wouldn't be as much when you draw down the total cost of the project?
Correct, so the project costs, the scope of the project that we're talking about, the remaining would go down.
And then, we would get less from the state grant?
We'd get less for the state grant because we're spending less.
Right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure-
Yes.
-we're clear as council, because, you know, the literature that we had received says that the city, you know, there was a $5,000 marker in there, and that's actually not true, because actually, it's over 100,000 that potentially the city would have to spend in order to see this go through.
If we get the project, if we put the project cost back up to the original project cost, we're proposing still no cost, no cost to the city that we're going to pursue the project, it's just there was this discovery today in our conversation with one of the two attorneys that Encourage uses, that their intent wasn't in fact to draw on the grant, when the understanding we had from the first meeting with WDC was, they weren't going to draw on it, they were going to put that total state grant into the project.
So, wouldn't that put the other foundations at, would they still be willing to contribute with that information?
This morning, they were, but the project, we're not suggesting that project cost is going to grow, we're still saying the project cost will be state grant plus the three foundations contributions, that'll round out the project cost.
Right, plus the difference that we would have to pick up.
There's no difference to be picked up, because Encourage would receive that benefit, the 100,000 dollar benefit, and draw. We're out of it at that point, so we're, we've, the state's offered a dollar amount, Encourage can draw on that, that's all that would be left for us to consider on the project, there's no other obligation the city would have.
So, is it the obligation of the Encourage Foundation to use that 100,000 toward this project?
They haven't provided a formal response, that was, I mean, they were going to consider it on their end and then come back to us.
I'm assuming the realignment of the street that we're talking about plays straight into what this project is, right? So, if we go ahead and approve what this project is, or we approve the street alignment, we're basically, in a sense, moving the steps forward to approve the grant money in order to get the project done for the farmer's market, the green space across the road, the grant money from the state, the foundations grants, all three foundations grants.
Contingent upon the city receiving a clean, an unencumbered deed back from Encourage.
And would the state's money be willing to go back for infrastructure?
And a second application, you're asking, like, if we were to go back to the state in the future and ask for-
How about 100?
They are, yeah, they're considering that street expense as an eligible grant expense, yes, and that was different from the original interpretation they gave us.
Right, yeah. So, I think there's two things that our council needs to consider, is, one, the amount of money that we'd be spending in order to get this done with the farmer's market and the green space, that we're kind of trying to lay behind, but the other issue is to make sure that the parking is adequate for the people, the seniors in the community. So, the design work, which to my knowledge is just a comprehensive drawing, right, as of right now, this isn't, we don't have measurements, we don't have right-of-ways, we don't have backstops, everything in order to construct the street, right? Or are we that close to the documents?
We've got two components, there's still be two design components, correct? There'd be the one that Joe has in the bid set that's going around, do you want to address that?
Yeah, just a couple things real quick, I'm hearing something, I just want to make sure that there's clarification, that there's a question about the cost of the project, and want to make sure there's not a disconnect. If there's 100,000 dollars less, at least the intent from the discussion is so far, is that the scope of the project would be reduced by that, so that-
But then, the state funding would also be reduced.
That's correct.
Right, so just to be clear, I'm just letting all the other council members know that the reduction of the total project also causes a reduction in the grant that we receive from the state.
Correct. The project itself is ready to let, if the council approved advertising this for bid, it would be advertised as early as this Friday, and then, the bid process would be two weeks, bids would be open then in two weeks. That said, as staff, I can't recommend doing that at this point in time for the reason that that parking lot isn't owned by the city, and as Public Works Director, I don't want to put the, give the city a black eye by advertising for bids and then having those contractors go through a lot of work, and then, we're not interested in opening the bids or signing a contract, because we're not ready for other reasons, so.
And the only caveat to that, I think, that goes along with that thinking, is if there's a desire by the council to advertise the project for bidding, given the condition upon, or just explicitly state that this project is contingent upon financing and gifts from various sources, right? And so, I think the city attorney suggested that there might be a period of time in a motion, if there was desire to take any action, that if that contingency's not satisfied by the city by a certain date, the project doesn't actually get let, so that way, we're sort of taking a couple of steps before we have to go there. We can't stress enough the timing is of the essence related to constructability in this calendar year, since we're halfway into the construction season already, too.
And that's the question, is when does the grant actually become not available to the city?
They've been provided, we've been provided 12/31 as the date. Now, that's when they are going to call out substantial completion, and so if there are punch list items, if there's a weather delay, I mean, there's any number of variables, we've been given some confidence that they would consider an extension, as long as there's good faith effort and substantial completion by the city on the project, and we'd certainly get all that in writing, of course, from the state, but that's been a tentative mention, that if all the effort has been put in by all these parties, that the state would positively view the, it's really at an underwriter and the executive level, because this grant is not performing presently, and so, the WDC doesn't even get the money back if the grant doesn't perform, the money goes back to DOA, Department of Administration, which then decides based upon the state legislature where that 500,000 goes. So, that's the, that's sort of the complicated two-step that the state, WDC, is playing with the other Department of Administration, which are the two big agencies. Mary Jo can talk more intelligently about all the agencies than I can, but, I mean, that's sort of the state about, I think, of the issue with the grant.
And I just asked, do you have, what do you have in writing from the state? What did they give?
I'll look to Adam, and we've got a grant amendment, I don't know if you want to talk to him.
You should have something, you know.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, what we have in writing from the state is the original grant. Earlier this year, Encourage had submitted a grant revision amendment, I guess you would call it, that basically is where they were asking to allow the demolition costs to be an eligible expense, so that they could begin to draw down on that. That amendment is basically what's in limbo right now, and they have not approved, they have not acted on that, so that is-
They, meaning the state?
WDC.
WDC.
Yeah, sorry. So, that's where things sit formally. As far as all this communication back and forth on when we have to expend the funds by and all of that, that has mainly been communications through phone conversations, in-person conversations with our local representatives at WDC.
Okay.
Until about two weeks ago, we now have an email-
Right.
-that sort of memorializes this, but they said they're not going to act on any grant amendment or any revision until we know we have a project to submit to their underwriters, yeah.
Is the planning of this, or the bidding and all that included in that grant money, or who pays for that? If you're going to submit this for bids and that?
Yeah, so that's-
Because that's got to cost something.
That's to the question that was raised, so the street is ineligible expense for the grant, design is ineligible, so any design work, and that's, Mead Witter Foundation has agreed to forward 50,000 dollars in design costs to design the non-street portion, and the council had previously acted upon.
So, they're not a issue of the city?
Correct, it's non-eligible in the way for the grant, for the project cost, yeah.
But we're still talking, and I just to answer your question, we're still not talking about the street construction design?
Yes, because-
That is the secondary design in which the mayor just alluded to.
Right, because that's, I was wondering who pays for, because then you've got to submit it for bids, and you get this, right?
That's kind of the juncture the city's at right now.
The city would pay for that.
The city pays for that?
Yep.
Okay.
Because the one you're talking about, Zach, is actually anything outside of the street right away.
I was just talking to the street, yeah, the other part I know, that's Encourage and the foundations and-
The state can use the cost for building the street as eligible grant expenses, just not the design portion, yeah, so we initiated that, knowing that we could not, still have all this conversation with the foundations and these funders, and then design the street, it just wouldn't happen this calendar year, so.
But you can't go, try to forewarn.
Yeah, we had tentative commitments on the funding, and that's sort of why we moved in on the design.
And that been approved? To spend that amount of money, or whatever it would be?
No, that's, that's, or the culmination of meetings is trying to get to a point where we would have a million dollars of matched funding to fund these improvements, and we have it, but it's contingent upon the reversion of property back to the city, that would be unencumbered, yeah.
A non-funding question I could ask? A non-funding question I could ask?
Yeah.
Mr. Terry could explain, kind of, I was just curious, what would you do? Would you take that loading dock and level it off so the semis don't have to back down? And it would be a flat surface and then kind of reconfigure that inside there?
Correct.
So that would be basically a parking lot, loading zone area with access to get in the building?
Right.
Instead of what it is now?
Right, yeah. And we haven't done any drainage calculations or anything like that, you know, there is, we believe that that is a reasonable solution. We can retain the, the loading dock area, we can keep it above grade, well enough above grade because we obviously don't want any water issues there.
Exactly.
And, you know, you can look, if you take a look at the cinder block, you can get a level line and really see how everything goes.
That's just what I was wanting to hear.
With a moderate slope to the west there, I think we can accommodate that by removing both of those walls and, and potentially installing a driveway entrance, maybe across from the bank, somewhere in there. It, it still makes a tight fit in and out. It's kind of one way in, turn around, go out the same way, you know? If there's two vehicles, someone's going to have to give type of thing, but it would, it would be a suitable solution that allows for covered access right to that area.
Well, you put a cover over it then?
No, it's already covered. That sidewalk's already covered right to the north of the building.
Oh, that part right there, okay, I got it. Yes.
Would it impede on any of, you're talking about going through the loading dock area? Is that correct?
No.
Would it impede on the community theater at all, their store or anything?
They're not there.
Oh, you're going to step out, yeah.
We're talking.
We want to retain the loading dock as access, but there aren't semi trucks unloading there anymore. And if we did have a large load that needed to get unloaded, the infrequent occurrence that may happen, you know, we've got forklifts over the city garage that, you know, we can offload that way. We don't need to have that ramp where that truck can back straight up to that dock anymore. So if we can retain the access so that you still have access in and out of the building at that location and modify that area so that it's usable for drop-off, you know, it, I, I think it could result in a real decent solution for that access drop-off deliveries from those vehicles.
Would those modifications be included in the cost of the street? Would that be included in the, because again, if the grant monies are going to be less and there was some indication that the project might be scaled down and not all done in one year, I'd hate to see the street get in and not the loading dock and those modifications made because then we're back to score one with difficulty accessing the building. So that would be done like as a first priority along with the street?
Well, that's what we'd have to decide. Yeah, I think that's a project that we could potentially consider an internal crew, the internal project that wouldn't be necessarily, because the other trouble to this project and the way the state grant works is we can't use our crews as an eligible expense. It all has to be let and privately, yeah, it's just, so, yes, I think that would be a project we would take on throughout the off-season or Rosemary.
And that's one of the questions I have, you talked to the three foundations, did, and I realize they're more concerned about the outside, but do they understand what that road will do in terms of impact on daycare and on home-delivered meals? I mean, I don't think any foundation wants to sign up for a project when somebody else that they already put money into, because all those people contributed, the state and the foundations, and then you're turning around and saying, well, you know, you sent, you put money in there, but we're going to take and cause some additional concerns and safety and lots of things there by, by not, you know, adapting and making a compromise.
Well, I think, I'd say a couple of things. First, because project costs have been a question, it's been talked about here, it's very much a moving target. You know, once we get some estimates even from our own crews, you know, I know one, at least one of the foundations that says, said they really want some city involvement in the project if a push comes to shove in the project costs, and, and we've all agreed and this is the way the council's proceeded, is to not spend any public monies, at least, you know, the local monies on the project. So should the project costs come in higher than what the estimates and what the budget allows? Well, we're going to have to have that discussion, but in terms of their recognition of those things, I can't speak individually to them, but I think they can, I can say that they're very interested in what we've heard from everyone and all the impact and the input we've taken on the project so far since, you know, May or so when we started having some conversations at the, at the center. The other thing that they're all very interested in is we have some parking impacts, right? The former Riverlock parking is no longer parking, the Legacy Foundation and their investment and all the other activities adjacent there, very interested in having 53 additional park space, street parking spaces that aren't there today. So things like that, I think, have been motivations to them to support the project and Encourage just generally, you know, having parking for their needs in the future too. So I would say parking has been probably the chief concern for all these variety of users, given that even Mead Witter's investment adjacent there with the green space, that's a clearly green space, and has been forward about potentially seeking development there at some point. And, you know, having a surplus of parking maybe in the short term would be a benefit to everyone. But I think they, they all recognize the success of the Centralia Center in general, that the farmer's market locale and the proximity, I mean, that in some respects, the market could be anywhere within reason, and they're very supportive, obviously, of it there, hence, I think, validated by their contributions.
I would just want them to make sure they are aware of, you know, the impact, because I don't, I don't think anybody wants a negative impact on what could be a very good community project.
Definitely.
Because there are a lot of good people giving a lot of good time, you know, involved in how we take care of our young and our old, reflect on the good company or community that we live in. And my husband always says to me, why, why do you keep? And I said, this is my hometown for 76 years, it's been my hometown. And, and I think there's a lot of seniors out there that would feel the same way, that, you know, we don't want to affect services that keep people in their own home and make a difference in the lives of their caregivers.
Definitely. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think, well, we haven't had quite the extent of the conversation, there's been elements of it that have been reflected, and I've said it at the center all along, I don't want to be the city mayor, I don't think anybody else has a city council members that screwed any of this up. And I think, you know, that's been kind of in the backs of our minds and sort of the hasty nature in some respect of the, of the grant process. I mean, the state approved four amendments to this grant, and, you know, here we are and they've said they will not extend it again, this is it, or we're going to return the money, and I think everyone's trying to make a, you know, good faith effort to, to do something with the resources, if it makes sense, if it can come together and if the project budget can satisfy the elements that we've talked about in concept for today.
I know you're not going to know the answers to this, Charlie, but if you go ahead and what you would vote is say, okay, let's go ahead with the road portion first, that reconstruction, right? I, I take it that the money the state granted, somebody's probably looked at this and said it's probably going to be close, right? It's not like they're giving you anything, 451,000? Not that the bids come in and go, well, we need 776,000. Then what?
So in terms of semantics, if we were to proceed with letting the project contingent upon the other funding, which is contingent upon the deed reversion, the council still has to award the bids. Let's say the street comes in at a million dollars, so something really radical out there, I sure hope it doesn't. I would be inclined to say this is not a project that's financially feasible for the city to take on at this time, primarily, some people go get a market and all the other improvement's done for half a million bucks. I think we're going to need somewhere between 600 and 800,000 for the non-market, or sorry, for the market portion of the project, or maybe around 500, 500 if we can get lucky. But the other component is, I know our crews can do the project, and it's just a matter of what it bumps around in our capital improvement plan, so if the other foundation said, you know what, we're still willing to put a million dollars in, is the city willing to put in 500,000 because we can do the project cheaper? That would be a consideration to the future too.
Okay.
I think, so I think that's the alternative, is if we march down this path and these things, the wheels fall off of it, and there's other opportunities for the city and the council to consider a project in the future.
But you won't know until you put the-
We would just send the grant back at that point and then-
Correct. But you won't know any of this until you send it out?
Till you let it, yeah, and get the project back, the bids back, yeah.
Okay.
And that's the crazy dynamic nature of the grant process.
That's what I thought. If you don't do that, you get nothing.
Yeah, and it's always the risk, and we've seen that in these public construction projects, these public construction projects have just, the prices are, they're out of the league, out of the league that we've been around or been accustomed to in the last number of years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you. As far as, I guess what I'm kind of listening to, especially where that truck delivery ramp thing that you talked about, that's, is the cost of that, upgrading that in this project?
Well, we would consider it, but we don't know what the street realignment stuff will cost until we go for bid and all that. So I think ideally, we would incorporate that either at a project included with, if we do it, no, then we're not going to consider it as part of the grant eligible expense, but if, if the project can, can afford it, then I think so, yeah, I think we would do it that way.
I guess my concern would be is if it didn't include that, but that's something that's necessary, that's vital, once we do the road straightening, and now we're finding a parking issue, now where do we find the funds with that? You know, and, and I think with a lot of the, the projects that we've done, we've had the cart in front of the horse, and we've went ahead and proved the project, but we had some issues of oversights this, over missing that, and then now it is a cost, you know, to the taxpayers. And I think that that's one of the things that initially when this was offered to us was at zero cost to the taxpayers, you know, especially with the unintended consequences, and it's challenging. It's that you got your known knowns, you got your known unknowns, you got your unknown knowns, you got your unknown unknowns, so it's hard to, it's hard to figure out that quadrant. But sometimes if we're spending this amount of money and putting this amount of time into it, I think that we need to try and satisfy the unknown unknowns by looking at that, and if that's a case where it's going to cost us quite a bit of money, even if we did it in house, what kind of other projects are we pushing off? I know right now, we've had a lot of overtime hours in public works, but a lot of the guys are taking time off. Well, if they're taking time off, now they can't fill potholes, and now we've got a pothole problem, so different things like that. So I mean, I, I really would like to know the cost of certain things just in case, because if that's the case where we need to do this truck deal and then take out the sidewalk and the walls and different things, I mean, that's, you know, coming from the construction industry, that's no minor task. That isn't like taking a, an area of green space and now putting concrete on there. There's, there's a lot more involved with that. So, I mean, I definitely, before we make any decisions, is hammer out all the potential unintended consequences before we, you know, do this, because there, there could be some major, and we see that with our Public Works Committee, we came back with a project that we thought was going to cost us $5,000, and now it's, the state is requesting that we pay $35,000 for it, otherwise if we back onto the contract now, we're, as per the Public Works Director, we're on the hook for $75,000. So it's one of those where we need to be cognizant as we move forward with these projects. That's all I got to say.
And Joe, you had engaged with the designers on that feedback and that we've got that contract with Juul, I don't know where we're at with ours recently, is that something you think that we could accomplish within that design scope with the, not to exceed that the council's already approved?
I think we're already maxed out-
Okay.
-with their design work. Yeah, I'm, I'm certain that we are at this point.
And I share that, I mean, this is a part of a package deal, right? We want to get all these components right, and maybe that was Tom's point at the council, is we start hacking certain aspects of this off. You make it a good project, maybe okay, and other people start having impacts, and that's not, certainly not anybody's intent, it's just that could, we could run into that. I guess in terms of funding sources, three come to mind, first of which is the Centralia Center Replacement Fund. We've got a reserve for improvements to Centralia Center. The second of which could be to, to go back to these funders and ask them to consider a third split each, and the third would be just Public Works Construction Fund, that we have our Public Works Construction Fund reserves that perhaps we could account for some of that work our crews are going to do it. So those would be the three funding sources that I can just name that potentially could fund that.
Yeah, I guess, really quick on that, if it was, and, and the reason why I kind of bring it up is that hypothetically, if the project doesn't happen or if we never looked at the project, would we be in a position to change the loading docks? And the answer is probably no, you know, so now we're trying-
Who wanted to?
Yeah, so we're trying to find a remedy to a problem that we created that if we don't do the project, then we don't have the problems at first.
Yeah, the loading docks, the issue with the loading docks is they've never been used, and I'm not sure why they were excluded from the scope. Just been one of those things that are there, let's leave them in case they're used in the future, I'm not sure. You know, so I know it's a pretty nice space, now that the loading docks are empty, since the community theaters move their stuff into their new spaces, which I think as a referral at the next finance meeting, we'll be to continue to market some of those spaces with, with, to the, to the community.
So I'm, I'm just going to ask the question to the people that are here representing the Centralia Center. Let's say we were to straighten this road, would a decent, sizable, well-lit up crosswalk going across to a park, would that be accommodating for the seniors?
No.
Too far away?
Too far away.
Okay, that's why, I just wanted to ask the question because, you know, if, if across the road becomes a farmer's market and a bunch of green space, it actually could potentially help out, you know, to get out a little bit more, and, but I, that's why I wanted to ask the question. So no way, shape, or form, if we put a road across there, would you guys be interested in walking seniors across the road?
For using, for using the center, no. The people that use the center need to be as close to the building as possible, just by virtue of disabled elderly, many of them now, even without any revisions, have difficulty coming from the south parking lot to the building because they have to park out. And by the time they get into the, the main building, they have to sit there.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to ask the question, because I want to make sure that we-
And I have something to include here. I don't know how many times we've had people falling inside the building-
Yep.
-that we have had to call EMTs this past year. So if you are asking people to walk outside across the street in the wintertime, ice and snow, that is, I'm sorry, that is not an option.
Like I said, I'm just asking the question.
I understand.
We appreciate you asking.
But I'm representative, you said, so I want to make sure that you understand that.
We park on that side of the building, and I have a walker. If we parked on the south side, there's only one curb cut there, and there could be three or four vehicles unloading people, sometimes in wheelchairs, sometimes vans, sometimes the accounting vehicle, and it takes time to unload those people, and meanwhile, there, there's all this congestion before and after that vehicle, so I have to take my walker, no matter how icy it is, and pull it up on the sidewalk, try to climb over because it isn't even, it isn't shovel there, you know, and that's hazardous, it's slippery, and, and it's just a terrible bottleneck on the south side, besides which, it's a longer walk. And then, you know, there's, it's hard on both of us to walk a further distance. So by parking on the east side, it's easier for us, but it has to be, that entrance on the east side is not easy because by the time we walk across the parking lot, it can be icy in the winter. There, we have to keep priority for the meals on wheels, people who are loading and unloading, and they're carrying these heavy carriers to take the meals out, so they have priority and that makes sense. But then the entrance right there drips, so if it's raining or it's melting snow, you have to walk through this canopy, yeah.
And there is no handicap accessible?
Right, right, and that, that makes it worse. Somebody has to open a door for somebody like me, or the door could just slam right on me and knock me over. And then the people who are unloading the meals when they first come, or taking the meals out to their cars, have to negotiate those double doors. So we tend to leave the inner one open, but then mosquitoes flies in the smoke from the only area where people are allowed to smoke and come inside the building, so it really isn't ideal, that really needs to be upgraded.
Joe?
Yeah, just real quick, regardless of whether this project moves forward or not, the concerns about the, the single ramp on the south side of the building, that'll be addressed when we redo the parking lot. We're looking at extending that ramp. addressed when we redo the parking lot. We're looking at extending that ramp, the entire front of the building, and not just having that one small area. So that will be addressed regardless of how this project.
As well as potentially the handicap accessibility to that door. As you mentioned, there's no button. I don't know, somehow it was never designed to have a button. And then as well as the public entrance.
And then the space between the parking spaces is too narrow for.
Yeah, they're not handicap, they're not, they're not designed to code. And I'm not sure. I think what happened was somebody got their hands on some handicap parking signs.
With the monkey.
Truly. I mean, you, I helped one of the patrons out of her vehicle. You were there, right?
Yep.
I couldn't get her between the cars. And I was just like, this isn't acceptable.
It was really humorous, except that it wasn't.
Yeah, it was terrible. It really, so that has to be addressed regardless, right? And you're going to lose half your parking spaces there because to code, they have to have a space in between them.
Can I just update that? Because we were part of that design. So one of the reasons it is the way it is, we have the handicap in the front there, that first row, right? By the building, we had, had enough space for home delivery meals. But the other part was used for directors initially. It was with the idea that we were running back and forth, back and forth, whatever. And we thought that was important. But when we looked at how much it was used and how many disabled individuals needed that space, we took the signs down. And I had mine on my garage. And it probably should have been there from the beginning because I'll tell you, it's so important. After hearing about falling and carrying heavy boxes, sometimes, you know, we do double routes. I take double routes. We don't have enough volunteers. Sometimes you do routes twice a week, you know? And they are not easy to do. They're all over. And so accessible parking is huge when you look at their population and keeping people at home.
And that's where I think in the parking lot design, the 11 additional parking spaces closer to the front door was something in the current driveway. When you pull into the center, having those, that driveway closed off in the 11, I think we're closer to the door.
And that'll be, that'll be.
So will that include meals on wheels parking for the drivers as well as handicap accessible?
Are you referring to what, what's area you're talking about?
If you take the walls down from the loading dock, and if, you know, we revamped that area, and that was going to be for meals on wheels delivery?
Loading and unloading. Yeah, that was the understanding.
Right. Will there be accessible for?
We'd have to make sure that there'd be room to physically do that.
Because otherwise, would the only handicap accessible be on the south side of the building then? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm anticipating that we'll have some handicap, exclusive handicap parking as part of our street parking on Third Avenue.
On the street.
Correct.
That's on the street, but that's.
So you have handicap parking in the south lot, some handicap parking on the street. And again, we'll have to assess what we have for room. We have to make sure that we can make those handicap parking stalls in accordance with the rules.
Right.
Before we can be signing them.
But Barb, would that be accessible, acceptable to you? Would you guys use handicap parking on the street, especially in the wintertime?
I'm trying to think about how, how it's configured. Is there a curb there? How much ice? We had a mountain of ice because the city was plowing that, that area there. And we were actually betting on when it would melt, you know?
No, we did.
So am I going to have to kind of negotiate around there? That, that's what I would be concerned with with downstreet parking there.
Yeah, the downtown areas.
Whether it was handicap parking or anything else.
The downtown areas that are paved like what's being proposed here, you know, we come back usually the evening after a plowing event. And we try to clear those areas and remove that snow so that there isn't a snowbank between the on-street parking and the sidewalk areas. I mean, just like we, you know, if you've been downtown, did you see those activities?
Well, I was a pole worker at the Centralia Center. And we had to get there at 6:30 in the morning to open the poles at a certain time. And literally, our, the city clerk had to guide us across the ice because the lot had not been sufficiently plowed on that south side, just to get us into the building to start preparing the poles to open. And then the first morning, the plowing wasn't keeping up with the ice there. And so it was a great hazard to those voters trying to come in. And a lot of people come in right away at the beginning of the day. So I'm really concerned about the snow coverage and trying to park on the street, whether it's on the east side or the south side. And there was some, our pole chief was told, oh, it's the city, or it's the county, or something like that. So, and that is why it wasn't done right on time. But it was just a mess and it was hazardous. And I didn't like, I did not like having to try to ice skate across just to get to the pole station.
Senator, help us around.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a whole lot. I don't know if the girls here would want to say anything from the little center or other.
I just have one question. In like the ramp area that you would fill in, how many parking spaces is this going to create? I mean, if you're only thinking four spaces, how many meals on wheels drivers do we have coming and going?
If you have four, you have four meals on wheels parking spaces now.
Right. But they can also use the handicap section.
And it's right.
Those are all full.
But they're not signed for that now.
No, they're not. But at least it's convenient for them to park there to carry the bags out. We have six routes going out every day. There is a possibility that all six drivers, and it does happen, that all six drivers come up at the same time.
And our delivery truck besides.
And the delivery truck. Right. And the food delivery truck.
The catering truck.
Correct.
Joe, I think it's already been answered in some respect. There's not a design that we've seen on the loading dock.
Right, right. It's just, right now, it's been a concept. Just looking at it.
Just last week that we were.
Right. Looking at it, it looks like there'd be room to get in and out. But again, it'd be a compromise. It, it, you know, it wouldn't be a standard public parking lot because there's not two-way traffic. You couldn't accommodate all of that. That, that work needs to take place. But I anticipate, you know, just looking at the, looking at the aerial, that, you know, the loading dock area is nearly as big as the parking lot that exists. So I, I, I think we'll be pretty close. And, you know, again, the concern that I have after spending some time out there is that one of two things needs to happen. Either the lot that's there needs to get reconfigured so that the handicap areas are proper handicap areas, or the handicap signs need to come down. There, there's no way that we can keep the number of parking stalls in that existing parking lot as is without significant risk. We can't have handicap signs up on stalls that are not handicap accessible. We're, we're asking for trouble.
Now we know about it. And that's the trouble.
Yes, that's the sidewalk.
The other thing that I would encourage, because Tom came out today, to take a look at what this actually would look at, look like if the street goes straight. So if you stand on the US Bank corner and look straight down, you would see where that road would cut across the green space and right in front of the daycare and right smack dab adjacent to the park play, the senior center. I think that, that is worth the time to see how close that comes to the building. And then given the concept that the building is to be a relaxing place where seniors can come, go out on the new garden space that the senior center has spent so much money renovating, and for the daycare. We have a lot of people that are very anxious. That provides a service that allows those caregivers to get respite and know that their loved one is relaxed and enjoying the space. They won't go outside if the cars are, are coming straight down. And if the road is straight, my concern is that they already zip around that curb. If you have a straight road and just the traffic that comes through the parking lot, the existing parking lot, people cut across and go. I, I'm just concerned that it's going to create more hazards and, and destroy what, what the intent of the center was supposed to be. So I, I would encourage all of you to take a look at that as well.
From a design standpoint, Joe, though, this street design actually has a jog in it. Jennifer, you and I talked about that. It actually does not run as close to the building as what the current street footprint is. And I don't know what the jog distance is. I can't see from here. I just want to.
It's good to put a flag out there or something.
And that plan that is floating around, you know, there's a few, there's a few landmarks on that plan. You can see where the existing parking lot lights are, for example. And you can see that the, well, I won't describe it because if you're not looking at the plan, it won't make a lot of sense. But you can, you can make those comparisons and stand out there and see really exactly where, where everything's going to be just by looking at some of those existing landmarks on the plan.
I think, and how wide are the, the travel lanes and how wide are the parking spaces to just give some relevance to separation?
I think it's a 36-foot total street there. Hang on a second.
I just want to point out that there will be, it's not like the travel lanes are right next to the curb. You've got.
The parking spaces.
Parking spaces, right. And I think just to the point about the meals on wheels drivers, I know a couple of them personally, one is my sister, and I saw her delivering meals with her friend. You know, the number of spaces along the building, I think we counted, these are 10 there. We also have a consideration about signing some of those during certain day parts, I think between like 11 or 10, whatever your pickups are, till the afternoon as also meals on wheels pickup site along the building. So just wanted to point that out, that, you know, preference, you know, if we can accommodate some handicap parking stalls as well as the meals on wheels pickup in that loading dock area, we can also do the same if the city desires to do so on the streets. And Tom, you had some other comments.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I wanted to see if they had something to say to start with. But at this, at this point in time, I personally, I can't get the okay to go ahead and let the bits on this, I think there's on the unknowns that are there. You know, one of the things I guess with the parking lot is the city had that not too many years ago. And let it go. And I will say that I opposed it at that time, but it did, it did pass the city council. Otherwise, that would not be, I guess, an issue here either. But I think as you read, look at some of this, even with the captured additional on-street parking, establishment of sufficient off-street parking to support the market will still need to be developed as part of the initial project. So I mean, you know, even if we're talking about 53 spaces, as I look, read this thing anyway, is that added to the streets, is that still not enough? And as I was there today, it was brought up to me that farmer's market being on, one of the days, it's Thursdays, that that place is parked downtown. Now Thursday is one of the days that yet just during the week is that the center is open.
Yes.
So that those parking spaces are going to be, well, I can't say non-existent. They'll be there, but there's going to be people that want to use them for the farmer's market as a market. If it goes there, it's going to be right under the shot of the street. Depending where it goes. But I think there's unknowns that are, too many there for me to, you know, say, just so we can move this along. I guess, for me, I'm willing to say no, and that we see what happens in the next few days. But I also do encourage, Jennifer, I think you said that for the council members to go over there, if we can get a read-off of what the layout is there, or if a couple of flags could be put out there for the council members to go by there and take a, a look at exactly where, where it would go. And there's, you know, with that apartment complex that's going in the back, that there's a number of parking spaces being lost because of, because of that. So there's a radical change that's occurring with nothing, actually with nothing being done. But I'd also encourage that, that considerate thought be given to at least that if, that no money would be taken out of, I think, the center's fund that they may have for money, because there is work that the center itself needs to be done to now. Things that have not been done. Air conditioning roof, started on one end of the roof today, and it was chipped, and inside the building when I went in there, it was cold. It was chilly. As you meandered your way on down through to, to the other end, well, the temperature went up. And I didn't go all the way down to where they said they were sweating. It's chilly going there. So I got far into that area. I came in on that.
Interesting.
I came in on that end of the building. But it was an interesting tour. I, I've stopped there, as I've said, at council meetings. I have stopped here in the parking lot. I walked out there myself. Actually, the, unfortunately, the, fortunately, the, it's a, that grassy area is a nice looking area. You know, the, the curve around the road, I guess you like it or don't like it, how, how you go into the, that big parking lot, it's right on where the curve comes. You know, with redoing of the parking lot, then maybe that should even, if, if the curve stayed in the road, that maybe that entranceway should be to the south anyway. So I, I, I just think there's, to me anyway, there's the unknown, the variables. And the council said a couple of months ago is that no city money to be, that they didn't want to put in there. And we don't know that, that that's the case yet. And I, I can't tonight put my support in favor of doing it. I'm leery of it anyway. But the unknowns there have me convinced of not going ahead.
So I agree with you until we can figure out some more of the planning, what, what that would look like from the city. But my quick question is, is, and I apologize for maybe trying to make this a simpler project, but yet still get the state's grant. Why don't we leave the road where it is and cut in? And I'm not saying we should take a lot of it, but, you know, put additional parking on that other side of the road, reconfigure that parking, put handicap along the Centralia Center, and then put the farmer's market in the current parking lot that's there? We can go a lot further with this project by just leaving the street right where it is, try to figure out what works for the Centralia Center, put additional parking on the other side of the road. Because during the day of the farmer's market, we could shut down Goggins Street, have vendors enter this pavilion area or whatever we had planned. We could put them off of Goggins Street, like some parking stalls there, put the market, and then the whole front side of the parking lot's still wide open for additional parking. The only thing we're really giving up is the green space on the same side of the parking lot.
You can't, you can't do street parking the way the roads can figure right now. It's not safe.
But that's, that's what I'm getting at, is we don't have to do street parking, right?
So we'd get rid of the green space in the building and put a parking lot.
What I'm saying is not the full green space, but take a look at a design to possibly accommodate some additional parking on the Centralia side. It helps with better access to the building. We don't have to reconstruct the road. And we can actually get the farmer's market built on the south side of the road, Third Avenue, put a farmer's market stand, and then have the rest of the parking. The only thing we're really giving up is the green space on the south side of Third. We would have the green space on the Centralia side of the street.
Do you mean the west side?
West side.
The west side.
West side.
So I guess, I guess what I'm thinking is, I mean, that road, how many years ago was that constructed? It's relatively new, right?
The building?
The road.
Seventies.
When Walmart came in there?
When Walmart came, it was in the eighties.
Eighties?
Because I did that deal with the.
So I mean, realistically, we've got 30 years to go.
This could be easier fix to getting the farmer's market there, getting this centralized, not spending the money from the grant on the infrastructure of the road, but actually spending it on the actual farmer's market for the infrastructure type work and take a look at the additional parking, plus maybe putting some parking on the other side of the road. And during farmer's market, you know, during the day, we can shut down Goggins as long as, you know, the church is okay with it or whatever. But I mean, there's some other options here to accommodate what Encourage was looking to do with that space anyway, with the farmer's market, additional parking, which is already there, and then put additional parking across the road. We wouldn't have to worry about moving the road and have to have all that expense. You know, our dollars would go further into that project. We could actually get it done with the, with the, with the foundations money, with the state grant. I'm just throwing that out while I'm looking at the overhead view, listen to everybody talk. It gives everybody additional parking, which we need, whether it be for the VA, Centralia, you know, anybody else that wanted to use that. It would also get the farmer's market downtown, which makes it more of a vibrant area, keeps more people downtown. It's just an idea. Like I said, we'd have to look at it, but I wouldn't.
Parking space would be very minimal, right? Half the size of what it.
Maybe what it's drawn out to be. Yeah. And that's, and that, that again, just opens up more parking or the ability to cut some of that out for green space, you know, along the edge of Third. We could actually make that like a green space or something. I'm just saying we can dress this up, still utilize, try to get what we're looking to get out of this project, but not. get out of this project, but not spending and trying to reconstruct road and create unintended consequences. So, I guess I'll echo what Tom had to say, which is, you know, at this point, we have too many unknowns, but maybe that offers a second opinion.
And I'll just respond, and I'm going to look to Adam, because I don't have a problem with that concept or that idea, and in fact, we talked about some of those things early on. Two problems, though, that I foresee could happen, one of which are the foundation's gifts are contingent upon the street realignment occurring, and the second piece is WDC's willingness to support a project that's not connected to the Tribune building footprint. And that was a, they believe they can sell it to the under, if I'm not mistaken, they can sell it to the underwriters in a way, because the grant was to the Tribune building, to the city to support the Tribune building project development. So, maybe you can weigh in, Adam.
Right. Yeah, I think the concern would be, I can see WDC being fine with farmers market and improvements to the existing parking lot in that situation, but if it's parking that's intended for Centralia, that's across the street, it doesn't seem like it's a huge distance, but that's not directly tied to the Tribune anymore. And since the grant was originally to the Tribune, it was hard enough getting their heads around the transition that we sold them with realigning the street. I don't know if that would be a possibility. In fact, we could probably.
But that's even actually better, because then we could take the ability in the actual time in order to take a look at that. We already plan on doing the parking lot anyway, once the senior apartment buildings go in, right? I mean, I was under the understanding that they were going to go in and redo their parking.
That parking lot is scheduled to be redone, yes.
Right. So, I mean, at that point, we could take maintenance dollars on that side of the street and extend that other parking to accommodate, we would just have to have it designed and appropriate. It just might not take, it might take a little bit longer to get until the other construction's done, but we might be able to get the farmers market in, continue that Tribune project, and help out with whatever we can do there.
So, are we willing to fund the design for that work? Because we, whatever foundation's gift is contingent upon design dollars going toward the farmers market and related parking and green space, so we would now have to put money into the project if it's.
Well, that's exactly what it still is, though. Still farmers market, green space, and parking.
But it's not to serve the Centralia Center user. They've been very, all the foundations are very conscious about spending money that the city would consider spending on its own.
What are we talking, are we talking, I apologize, I'm assuming you're talking about what's on the Centralia side?
Correct, yeah. Any improvements on that side of the street.
It's a far less of a spend for us to go about it that way than what it would be to try to move the road and have all the unintended consequences.
But I think the point is to grant, expenditures budget has been predicated upon the street reconstruction, that we can, we're not making improvements on the Centralia side of the road, and that was what the state had already agreed to. The grant is going to be less, or we won't be able to spend as much of the grant, which is, I thought your objective, right, is to try to maximize the grant.
But there would be other ways that we could revitalize that, that would be the.
We could. We won't construct all of that this year, and I think we would also jeopardize the schedule. I mean, it's worth us going back to the foundations, if there's consensus that folks want to do that, but I can almost guarantee, to get to their funding commitments, both from a construction and a design, that it's not, they're not going to be as willing to fund it at a level that they've been willing to do it. And the other piece is, the farmers market folks have, the massing that was designed with the one that says, "Red line indicates where to bump the Tribune project," that massing was based upon the amount of farmers market vendors, amount of parking for Tribune, as well as the amount of parking that we believe would support a successful market. So, if you could, if you would separate those, you may be able to still accomplish what you're trying to do, but I don't think you're going to get the same amount of grant dollars to support that. And I also think you're going to run into issues with the market. I think it jeopardizes, and Christie can maybe speak to that, because they're currently providing support to management of the market, no better than I.
Yeah, and if I have the opportunity, I'd like to speak to both, actually, so I can speak to the market right now, and that's based on really minimal growth of our market projections, so our market is, as you guys maybe have noticed it with the road builder that you allowed lately, is booming and doing really well, the vendors are doing extremely well. So, this has all been taken from their input, from means that we have with them over the last year. And so, we know if we shrink that down, that reduces their ability to have economics coming to their door. And that whole design massing was based on the needs for them to be close enough to haul our product if needed, and some of them have struggles or restrictions within that as well. So, there's that element, so the market piece is key to how it's been made out, that it's part of that. And to Zach's point, you know, the foundations did meet this morning, and I wasn't at that meeting, however, there was a shared vision in this process, and it's really unique that all of the foundations have come together to support this project, and Encourage is open to the reversion of the property. It's just, you know, two weeks working with legal is just a short, you know, we're working really quickly here to make this happen, but we understand and value this collaboration and this effort, and of course, want to make sure that Tribune isn't compromised in the process as we're about to, you know, really move forward on that building. So, I think there's some really incredible things happening with this downtown project.
And that same design concept was the one that the foundations made a commitment to support contingent upon that model. Not to say they couldn't consider an alternative, it was just that was what was put in front of them.
And there was a great upon element, so parking was key. The green spaces is a piece that it's been agreed upon with all foundations, to my understanding, based on this morning's meeting.
Yeah, green spaces has been a key one.
The farmers market elements, pedestrian access, the amphitheater elements, and then the sustainability goals that, you know, you support for that from the city moving forward.
So, what you're saying is our only option is to improve straightening the road and upset a bunch of senior citizens, or not do it, and then not have the collaborative effort from the groups. I'm just asking if there is a possible alternative to working with the groups, going back to the groups, and saying, can we try to work in the space, and how do we do that? You know what I mean?
Yeah, so, we'd be starting over. At this time.
Yeah, we'd send the grant back, which is, you know, if that's the council's pleasure.
Costs have been spent on design, small tweaks are one thing, starting over, is, I forget what that, do you remember what that number was?
The street was for Jewel?
About $60,000. About $60,000's been spent on the design and construction documents. You know, we're at, we're about a month later than what we really need to be to let this project, so it is a crunch time, you know, it's going to be a go or no go.
Are you Mr. Cherry? Sorry. Are you Mr. Cherry?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. Is it worth, you know, I'm thinking of some of the people whose lives are affected by this, that $60,000. They're getting their meals every day, those meals are a lifeline for those people, you know. How many meals?
17,000 Meals on Wheels in 2018.
And again, it's not just the Meals on Wheels, it's the people who come to the center, not even the people who come to eat, but the people who come to use the Lowell Center for all of their activities, the people who just come to walk in the wintertime, because the sidewalks are not shoveled and are not de-iced, and people come and continue to exercise. And if you're from Wood County Health Department, are you from the Wood County Health Department? I would imagine that you understand the value that that building provides to not only senior citizens, but other people in the community that come to walk there during their lunch hour, again, in wintertime, because they cannot walk on the sidewalks outside. I wish everybody would be able to see the utilization that this building offers this community, the whole area. I mean, it's just what these two ladies over here have done in building this community center, the senior citizen center, is just amazing, and I've watched it grow, because I started when the building just opened. And just, we've had people who are still 90, 95 years old come to the center, and they still volunteer, they are still active in their community, they are still living at home, they are still paying taxes to the community and being an involved community member here. And I don't want to see that taken away, because they cannot continue to come to the center because of parking issues. And I guarantee you, in the wintertime, they're not going to, because they are so afraid of falling. I've had people who have come to the center and then said, "I can't come anymore in the wintertime, I have to get Meals on Wheels," because I am too afraid of falling. Because I hope everybody realizes that if you fall, you break a hip or something, and you're at that age, you're not going back home, you're going into a nursing home. I'm sorry, but you are. Very few people are able to recover from an injury like that. And I just don't want to see any of my wonderful people who come to, it's like a family for us there. We very much care about them, and I do not want to have them put their lives in jeopardy just to come for socialization and for a meal, because I would hate for them to fall and end up in a nursing home.
Zach?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just summarize, so you can hear why we would, we think it can be a win-win? Rosemarie and I spent a wonderful afternoon, morning with Joe, and I really do think there's a compromise, and we can all win. The question is the money, and it's always the money, isn't it?
Yes.
I agree that we're not prepared to do certain things now, for obvious reasons, but if we can stay on track talking to each other and planning that it is a win-win, we have a lot to cheer, because Rosemarie and I are passionate, obviously, about Centralia, and so are all these people. And we have somebody here who's passionate about the farmers market, and it's all good stuff.
Yeah.
So, it's time to make it even better, and I would request that this council would create something that all of us could be helpful in making this move forward, and have our voices heard, and have all of you understand, we're with you, we don't want to bite you, but we don't want our constituents jeopardized. And I think everybody here agrees with that, and that's the passion in this room for all of us. And I think some of us will sign up if you give us a place to help. I think, you know, that project, when it was done, there were 21 alderpersons. So, let me tell you, that was a challenge to get it done, but there's $750,000 in there from the state. So, you know, we can take and magnify that $750 if we support each other. I mean, that's where I'm coming from, and I really hope we can solve a lot by continuing to work on what's the best idea, but I don't know that we have time for the building grant. That's our problem.
That's a big question.
And I understand why they want it back, it's too long. I mean, that's part of the federal law. So, I mean, I understand you're in this bind, it's not totally your fault, but it's kind of circumstantial. I don't know that I volunteer everybody, but I know some of us would certainly sit in.
We're all, we're retired.
And I just really appreciate your comment, because I hope that that wasn't the, my intent is not that it's one or the other, I don't.
Well, that was great of my comment.
That would never.
Nobody, I'm not hearing, I think we took a dangerous turn when we decided to pit constituencies against each other. I think that was not, that wasn't the discussion by the funders, that's not been the intent by the city, that's not been the intent of this room. And I'm trying to conceptualize, and I get to the center every three to two weeks, if not more, right? And you folks spend every day there, and I think the city is doing its due diligence by spending $450,000 to reconstruct the parking lot this fall, and reconfigure it for more parking spaces, for parking spaces that are closer to the door, working very hard to make sure that the senior housing project serves seniors and veterans next to the VA clinic, that there is not a loss of parking as a result of that project. I mean, with all of these details we've spent, you know, everyone has spent so much time to make sure that there hasn't been a cannibalization, and I continue to hear some components that maybe are contrary to what the city actually has planned to implement as it relates to the parking lot installation as adjacent to the center. Not to mention that there will be 18 parking spaces that will run the block of the building for folks to get, that are actually closer to the door than the current eight spaces that serve the auxiliary lot today, which, five of which are signed for Meals on Wheels pickup and delivery, and four of which will be less because of the ADA code issued. So, I just, I don't want us to take our eye off the ball in what has been accomplished by the council and by everyone working together in that spirit, right, and recognizing that we're trying to make a good thing better. And I, yeah, I don't think it's fair to pit constituencies apart, and I think we can call that out of order if that happens again, because that's not anybody's intent. And I think, you know, feedback's been great to get us to this point, where we wouldn't have a design that represents a lot of tweaks, a lot of edits thus far. And I would, if I may, offer a suggestion, because I know that the time is running long, and I wasn't ready to expect the council to take a step forward tonight, we don't have a deed, and we don't have funding unless we have a deed. So, we need some time to accomplish that, and I would feel more comfortable, you know, having everyone get the chance to spend some time to think about this and consider it. The design of the Market Square is going to have to happen very quickly if, in fact, the deed happens and the financing becomes available, but I think it can be accomplished. And I think if the state continues to hear that we're working toward this project, you know, maybe we can accomplish a project yet in this period of time. So, I would just make those comments and just make it clear that we set this meeting with the intention and hope that we would have a deed and some additional financing, and the financing which we have, it's just contingent upon the deed. So, any other comments from alderpersons before I go off-table again?
No, I thought it was.
Okay. Happy to go to you, just wanted to make sure.
Oh, no, I thought it was. I hate to ask kind of a dumb question, but just listening to all this, what is the worst that can happen, let's say if nothing's done, just leave it the way it is, what are you losing? And what about the compromise? That would suggest that I think there are probably alternatives that we don't look at, maybe none of us know about, where some other person would come up and go, "Oh, wait, why don't you just move this here, do that?" And part of it that always bothered me in the beginning, and I don't, is the farmers market a private thing, city thing, or what is it?
It's a public, I mean, it really isn't anything, to be honest. The mall used to manage it, it didn't have a manager, the health department was the de facto management. And I think there's a plan, there's going to have to be a plan that a nonprofit or an existing organization picks it up.
But it seems like this whole project is a private thing, that the city and the state have to be involved to get the money to get this, and I'm like.
No, I believe it'll be a public, it'll be a public-private, if nothing else, it's sort of a public-private already.
But it's more, you know, to me, if nothing happens, well, what do you do? Have a farmers market where you have it, and things are good, and I don't know.
The trouble with the existing situation down there is, it is a confluence of too much of a bad thing. I think, you know, it's a great market, it's a great location temporarily, but we've displaced so many business parking situations, we're trying to improve the situation for everybody, where everybody would get a component of the win-win all the way around.
But it's moving the street, and with all the unknowns, worth it right now?
Well, that's the funder, I think, and you look at some of the foundations are saying, we need more parking down there. We're hearing that because of some other property becoming unavailable, that there's a shortage of parking. Some of the foundations that have other investments as well, recognizing that there's.
Then tell them to buy a parking lot somewhere.
Well, that's what they're doing, they've spent $8 million to build a parking lot here.
Hey, somewhere else, go buy Charlie's Good Times Bar, I don't know. Some other, I'm sorry, I just, or what's her name?
They're trying to create parking.
Right.
They'll stop parking.
Other comments?
I heard the suggestion that we all have more input as this plan and ideas are going forward, like you said, you know, that, and is that, you know, can we set up means to do that?
Yeah, we have, and we continue to do it, so if you want us to come by and talk about, if you've got some additional concerns.
Well, you know, what seems is that this is all fuzzy to us, you know, we don't have an idea of what this would look like, really, and there's some idea about changing the loading dock, and doing this, and, you know, tweaking that, and maybe some on-street parking for handicapped, or maybe not, so it's all very vague. I'd really like to see discussion and a plan, and like you said, input, so that we can make this a really great thing. I don't think it's a win-lose, I think it can be a win-win.
Great. Yeah, sure am happy to.
Does it require a working committee to be set up, you know, so that members from the three foundations can be part of the discussion, you know, and the seniors? I know how Lowell, how Centralia was built, it's a public-private partnership, it was huge.
huge. It was, you know, it was the community foundation's first big project that they did. And they served as the financial collection agency for all those donations. And the other foundations pitched in, you know, and the city, Mayor Kupiak at one time was a county board member, got up on county board floor and said, "We got $750,000 and, you know, county's going to join." And, and really, that's what makes a good community is when foundations and city and county governments get together. Is it, you know, is it something that you want to put in the minutes and say, "We want to create a committee where notices at least are given out to concerned individuals so that they show up?" And that, so that you can go on. And can it be an advisory committee or something to, to your committee? Do you want that? Would that help?
I think it'd be beneficial if we, if we weren't operating off the timeline that we are at this stage, right? So if, if the decision is to forego the state grant and return those funds, I think that would be the next life of the project. I know to achieve the million dollars in commitments that we have, I'm not certain that those million, that'll be there later. I don't know. I can't answer that question. I certainly don't write the checks in order to make that decision. But I think that's a possibility. I do think from a design of the non-street portion, that's a real possibility. That's been, all the foundations have agreed that that's, it needs to happen for the sake of a successful market and even the neighboring businesses. I mean, they all have an awareness of the project, but they may have an interest, you know, in participating. So I think the schedule is the concern. This project, as Joe said, needed to be let for bidding. And we hope to have the financial commitments that everyone would, would agree to make it happen a month ago. But that didn't happen. And here we are a month later. And so we're probably, from a constructibility, within weeks to a month of having to design the, the non-street portion as well. So I guess, yeah, I would just answer in those, in that way.
I just throw it out. How do you move a project from being installed to something that can be viable?
Yeah.
And what does it take?
I think both legacy and Mead Witter's commitments expire on 12/31 from a, from an expense reimbursement standpoint. Yeah. I'd ask that question today because I said, "Well, there's a possibility if street design doesn't, letting doesn't happen soon, if it is going to happen, but it's delayed for some reason," or the, the market and green space improvements. What if those get delayed and we have a weather situation where we just can't finish it this year? And I didn't get a response. A lot of folks needed to have their boards answer those questions. But the state had previously expressed an interest to suggest that if substantial completion is done by a certain date, they could consider a period of time where the underwriters would allow the grant to be drawn down. Let's say if the, a big thing needs to happen in the spring to wrap up something. You know, that was just a thought that came out from a timeline perspective. Alderpersons, any other discussion? Otherwise, I would either entertain a motion or constitute this as a formal update and continue to update if folks want to have, have further discussion about it.
Often does this grant surface? I mean, it's until December 31st, but I mean, does that come around every few years or a year? I don't know.
Adam can answer that.
It's changed since we applied.
It's a WEDC CDI grant, Community Development. I should have known the name, but it's still been on my mind right now. Basically, it runs on their annual budget. So it's reallocated as of July 1. They get a new allocation. There have been changes since we originally applied for it. On behalf of Encourage, at that time, the maximum was $500,000, which is what we had applied for. They, the state has reduced that amount to 250. So if these funds go back and we go back to drawing board and we still think this project's worthwhile and reapply for it, which is a real possibility, the maximum would be at 250,000. And I, so that, I guess, does that answer your question as far as it's a great recurring program?
It seems like the grant is the key thing right now, timing, right? And do we rush into it and find it's something that is not appropriate for certain, certain circumstances? Or we take time and maybe a grant's available a year from now? I don't know. But the grant seems to be the key point they're talking about in a sense.
So that's certainly what's driven, driven the process.
The drive.
Yeah. And foundations receptivity to managing, I think their passion is to support the grant, but their, their passion is maybe more than what their ability to finance it or desire to personally finance it, I think is probably in limbo, right, or in conflict.
This community, though, has been very good and written a lot of good grants. And I, and I don't think you should ever say it can't happen again, you know, because you do a good job. And it's available every year. It's just that they changed the program, as Adam said. And then, you know, then there you are with your project. But, you know, it's, it's federal money that flows through the state. Why shouldn't, why shouldn't rabbits get it? Everybody else does. It's just that dang matching side.
Further comments? Alderperson, can I?
Yeah, I guess I'll make one last comment. And it is to your point. I hate to see this grant money go away. But I'd also like to see the project done right, to make everyone happy. There's just too many question marks right now. There's some that are answered, like the parking lot deed that is going to most likely come through. There's a lot of other ones that I hate to lose the money, but want to see it done right at the same time. And if the time, if we're off on the timing, we're off on the timing. I mean, we've got to keep working towards it, but.
Any further comments? Or I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by adjournment? Second of the blazer, on favor?
Aye.
You oppose?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here and your input.